Okay.
All right, so it is six oh one. We'll call to it is recording.
It is.
Are amazing. Six oh one, call to order. Uh, we will initially off the bat do the election of the chair position here for our Lincolnville School Committee. Tracy. I'm fine doing that if you guys want me to continue doing that. I'm fine doing that. That would be great. Okay. Yeah, we gotta have a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion for Tracy O'Brien to continue as the chair of the Lincolnville School Committee.
All right, all in favor. Four in favor and I'll abstain.
Okay.
Vote for myself.
You don't have to.
It passes regardless.
Yeah, you appreciate your doing that.
Excellent. Uh, and then election of vice chair. Kirsten was it last year? Does anybody else want to go it? You want to have a go again?
I'm happy to do it again.
I nominate Kirsten for vice chair then. Unless there's somebody else that's really chomping at the bit for.
No, but thanks for never being absent last year.
I don't think I've actually ever missed a school committee meeting in six years, five years.
It's impressive. Do we have a second?
And second?
Thank you.
All in favor? All four in favor? You're nice. Five in favor. Confidence, self-confidence.
Okay.
Adjustments to the agenda.
Okay, in the left-hand side of your folder are three other sets of minutes that I realized I needed to go back and pull for June. There is the June 2nd regular school committee meeting minutes, the June 9th special school committee meeting minutes, and the June 24th special school committee minutes.
I will say, I know that we have six of them. We can either do them one by one if somebody saw anything or wants to have a second to look at it. But if there's not any issues with any of them, we could just say all six unless you have any. I think that there's probably, oh wait, are we all, were we all at it to be able to vote on it?
Anne can't vote in June, so you might have to take the June ones separate from the July ones. The June ones are all the additions to the packet.
As long as they were there. So Amy, Kirsten, and I, are we were attendance at all three June ones?
Yep.
All right, let's do June first then. Or the June ones.
The June.
All three June ones unless we want to do them individually.
July ones? Yeah, the July ones, sorry, it didn't land.
Oh, that what he packaged it together for us.
Okay, so let's have it all of the June ones.
So we got a June 2nd regular school committee, a June 9th special meeting, and June 24th special meeting. Oh, you were there for the last one.
But she, she couldn't, well, maybe she could vote.
She made a motion in it, the June 24th one, she made a motion, so.
I guess it was after the, uh.
Election, yeah. Let's just do them one at a time then. June 2nd regular school committee meeting, any edits, any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the June 2nd.
Can I get a second? All right, I'm favor. Four of us in favor and then Anne abstention because she wasn't here. All right, next one, June 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve June 9th.
Can I get a second? Being a seconds, all in favor? All four of us are in favor, one abstention. June 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve June 24th minutes.
Can I get a second? Anne seconds, all in favor? All five in favor? Up next is the June 15th, 2025 special school committee meeting.
July 15th. I'll make a motion to accept the July 15th, uh, meeting minutes.
Excellent.
About seconds.
All right, all in favor? Excellent. That is all five in favor. All right, and then July 20, nope.
Yep, July 29th.
July 29th.
Workshop.
Any, the workshop?
I'll make a motion to accept the July 29th workshop minutes.
And all on paper? Same.
Workshop wasn't there? I don't remember.
I don't think so. So yeah, the three of us.
Yep.
Kirsten, Amy and I, so it passes anyway. Oh, you weren't there?
No, it says that I wasn't there. I'm trying to remember.
But it says Anne was.
It would have been.
It was the workshop.
Actually, Anne, Anne was there.
Here, that was the day that I flew back from. That was the day, yeah, I had a, yes, I was here. No, I wasn't, because I was away.
So maybe instead of Anne, it should have said Vina.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll make that correction.
What happens when we have two minute meeting minutes all in a row?
I know. Can I say I'll make a motion to approve the July 29th workshop committee minutes with that?
With, yes.
Correct.
All right, Amy seconds, all in favor? Four in favor, one abstention. Next up, the August 5th special meeting. This would have been the one just before our vote, right?
Right.
Yeah, like the town meeting.
Right.
But, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the August 5th special committee meeting.
About seconds.
Amy seconds, all in favor? All right, four in favor, one abstention.
Okay, so we need to go back to five on the item, the agenda. We have two people online, so.
Oh, any comment?
Is there anybody online who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, moving on.
And the Warren.
We've got those, yeah.
Signatures and we have already done an approval of all those minutes. Sorry, I am trying to get into the phone. My brain has been used to the same agenda flow. And I'm getting out of whack of my agenda flow.
I'm sorry.
It is not your fault. I just need to pay attention to the wheels right now. So we will skip ahead to report on the facilities committee meeting.
Yeah, so Anne was there. So Anne, I don't know if you want to start off or you want me to start off, uh, give yours. Okay, but I don't want to sway your sense of the, the meeting. There was initially quite a bit of, and I shared some of this in an email, quite a bit of pushback on the whole idea of, uh, moving forward with anything. And, um, after quite a bit of discussion, uh, it became clear to me at least that most of the, uh, reticence comes from the scope of all the items that were in the proposal, right? Regardless of which option. And, uh, towards the end of the meeting, uh, I asked the select board and the facilities committee if they would entertain this coming Thursday, uh, a set of options that focus just on the boiler plant, which is what appeared to be, the consensus was this needs to get fixed and that we're playing with fire if we don't deal with it. So Tom went back, uh, and I sent these off to you and I also brought copies for you, uh, went back and stripped out the other items in the, in the options. Those items included, uh, putting in heat pumps for cooling, uh, lighting upgrades, some building envelope work, and came back to us with just two, or will come back to the group on Thursday with just two options. Boiler plant essentials and two options on the paving. One would be to just redo the section they have to tear up to put the gas line in for the boiler, and the other would be to just do the whole parking lot at the same time. Um, I can share those, um, those two sets of options with you if you, if you didn't take a chance to, to look at them the other day. And we don't have to make any decisions tonight, um, but I do want you to be informed before we get to Thursday. Here you go. So this is, that's the first option, and that one included, um, the complete parking lot. And this one includes just patching the parts of the, the pavement that would be dug up to put the gas line in. And so after listening to the debate, uh, I proposed to the com- facilities committee primarily, although the, the, but select board was well represented. I think maybe all of them were here, um, that we come back to them with this set of options and see if they weren't at that point on Thursday, ready to make a recommendation to the school board. I don't know where that stands. A little straw poll suggests that it might, uh, they might make that recommendation. There was one member of the facilities committee who was, I don't think swayed even at this point. Um, but, uh.
Like to do anything?
To do anything. Um, there was some real concern from that member about process and about feeling like he was out of the loop and.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, we, I, I took that to heart, but, um, on the other hand, I do feel like there was a, a bit of a, a sense of, you know, we're, we're taking a risk. This isn't going to go away. If we wait another year, it's not going to be any cheaper. And, you know, if we're true to our, uh, our ethic here of taking care of the school, that perhaps, you know, it's time to, to make a, a, a motion or, or make a recommendation to the school board. So with that in mind, I scheduled a meeting afterwards for this committee to decide whether they want to go forward or not. Um, I would say the sense I got from the rest of the select board was that they felt too that it was, you know, an important project to move forward on. What limits our sort of ability to continue to talk about it is really whether this work can get done by heating season this year. And it would require, uh, I think this committee to make a decision on Thursday to go forward for EMC to be able to make sure they could have the equipment, the boilers here and get them in, installed before. I think you said mid-November is sort of their drop dead deadline, like we can't afford to, to have boilers off. Doesn't mean that we have to feel on Thursday like we've got to do this. I think, uh, it would be instructive for those of you who can listen to the facilities committee debate, um, to hear sort of the senses and get a sense of, you know, is there enough goodwill here right now in the community uh, to move forward? And if we don't, then, um, we've got a lot of, you know, the upside is we got a lot of time to continue to talk about this with the community, to put this back out to bid in the spring and go forward from there. Amy asked some, uh, pretty pointed questions and I just shared the answers because it just came in. Um, I don't know if you've seen them. Uh, Amy wondered what, you know, what would happen if we just did one boiler right now, uh, and did the second boiler later in the spring. And she asked about is the need for the Jace controls needed? So the answer to the second question is yes, that to really drive these boilers correctly, we need to upgrade the computer system that's running it. And, um, Tom said this, this system's as old as the boilers, uh, you know, it's not efficient, it doesn't work. It can't be guaranteed that it's going to continue to work and it won't cycle the boilers on and off in a way that's makes them the most efficient. It is possible to do one step of this first. And, um, if this group said, boy, we'd like to see that option on Thursday, I'll see if he can put it out there and give us a, a bid. It still would require us to move forward on the second boiler at some point. So it'd be a phase two. Maybe we can push it off into a second budget year. But I'll remind everybody here that we are not, there is no impact on this year's budget to moving forward with both of them. So we would put off for a year a second half of this payment. And if you look at the cost of the boilers, it's about total, um, well, it's on the backside is the breakout. So the boiler room itself is about a $300,000 project. Um, the boilers and, you know, so conceivably, we would save about $150,000, but that doesn't mean we'd get a second boiler at that same price a year down the road, so. And we're paying then for everybody to come back, right? So not only is it unlikely to be the same cost for the materials, but it's unlikely to, I mean, we would essentially be paying for people to come in and do something in the moment that they could have had done while they were already on the clock, so. Anne, what do you think?
You did some right, um. I couldn't tell how much, but I think a lot of the opposition and resistance was feeling that they, or at least one member wasn't part of the process.
Correct.
So, um, you know, that if we go through this again to do other things, they have to make more of an effort to get that input early on so we can figure it out instead of someone just feeling oppositional because of other reasons.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I did feel everyone agreed that the boiler needed to be replaced. And I don't know. I couldn't really get a feeling for whether they thought replacing one at a time was a good idea or not. I don't think so.
Right, if we have to do two eventually, that does seem inefficient. Because part of that cost is getting the equipment actually delivered right here from wherever.
Sure, we just ordered some wa- water tanks for, uh, Appleton. The cost of the two water tanks was, let's say, $50,000. The delivery cost was $35,000, you know? So big equipment like this is very expensive to move. And it, I would think there's some cost savings to have one trailer truck delivering two boilers at once as opposed to coming at two different times.
Well, and the excavator, like all the equipment they actually use to dig and stuff all has to be delivered to at the same time.
Right.
Do we know what the timeline is if this?
If this went through, Tom felt very confident that this could be in place before the heating season begins this year.
If we approve on Thursday.
If we approve on Thursday. Um, he's gone back to the bidders and said, listen, we're, we're a little delayed. Do you still have, you know, the stock? Are you, do you still have room in your calendar? And, um, one of the two said a definite yes. The other was, uh, needed to check their calendar, so I haven't heard back on that. But the difference in price was only a few thousand dollars between these two bidders.
And is it a project that can go on while school was open or?
Apparently, apparently, I mean, they will, the good thing here is the hot water tanks are on, already on gas and it's a separate boiler unit that's running that. So essentially, when the boilers are offline, it just means there's no heat available in the building. And if he thinks he can be in and out before the true heating season begins, he, he's felt pretty comfortable.
I feel like it's a main tradition. You try not to turn on heat before November 1st.
That's my tradition.
Do we know with both of these, is it going to require, I, I've heard that the project is going to require pulling out all the raised beds, C and school garden?
I'm not su- Tom didn't think it meant all of them. It, that is the site for burying the tanks. And there was quite a bit of discussion about that. Uh, people got into the weeds, to be quite frankly, thinking that, um, yeah. Very good. I, I didn't, I didn't intend that, but I, I'll pretend I did. Um, uh, the, essentially, the other potential places all have significant hurdles to overcome with all the lines that come into this corner of the, of the building. You know, there's other gas lines, there's all the power, there's electricity, there's data there. And so putting the tanks in this direction means a significant cost in terms of having CMP and all those other people come out here, mark those lines, you know, help make sure they don't dig them up. Um, so from Tom's perspective, that's really the only viable option. It would come into the corner of the building. A pipe would go up the outside of the building across to the boiler plant and avoid all of the other stuff in that. And he had a pretty interesting slide showing how much stuff's coming into that corner of the building, suggesting that it would be a difficult, difficult process to come in from any other point in the, in the area.
So, sorry to.
Yeah, no.
Do we know if that's gonna? Do we know if there's a scenario in which the gardens can be there until like the garden season is over before they rip that out?
That's a good question. I didn't, I don't think that question got asked. It could get asked on, um, on Thursday. You know, what is the timeframe for the excavation work? Um, I really don't know the sequence of what has to happen.
So presumably, I realize stuff is trying to, it's beautiful, but presumably can be moved. It's not like the garden will be, we won't have a garden.
Yeah, I'm sure that it can.
Tom seemed to think it would only impact the fur- furthest end of those gardens.
Fencing, everything inside.
I don't, I don't, I can't, I, I'm not sure.
From what I, it's the raised beds.
Okay.
Yeah, not the raised.
Side of the fence.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
What's going on Kyle?
I don't think it's water.
Yeah, go ahead. We're in a meeting. You're only being recorded. It's all good.
So I, and I would echo what Anne said. I think we need to be really cognizant of the need to slow down on some major projects and the need to, you know, spread the word a little more widely. Um, I really don't feel that the bulk of the resistance that we felt at the August 5th meeting really was a sense of like, we shouldn't be doing this, right? It was a question of, you know, this is a big ask and we really need to build in more community buy-in, more opportunities for people to hear about it. Um, and so conceivably, if we wanted to continue to look at some of the other pieces of the project that EMC, I, I think we just need to take our time. We need to, to spell out to people why it might be valuable to have some air conditioning in parts of this building and, you know, talk about it in a much more uh, measured approach, so.
They don't talk about, um, the possibility of building a timeline.
Correct.
To get some of these other things done and then being able to, not trying to, but renegotiate.
Yeah.
The same contract and, and not necessarily starting everything over from scratch.
So there's a couple of things associated with it. Yeah, so we could, and I, I wouldn't recommend this to the school board. We could say, okay, we're going to do the air conditioning in a second phase, two or three years down the line, and negotiate a lease purchase that incorporated those costs. Um, or we could continue to talk about this with the community and go back to EMC because we've already, we don't have to go through that process again. And say, okay, we're ready to think about a phase two and we'd like to look at these items. You know, go out and price them, go out and get bids and come back to both this group, the facilities group and the rest of the community and say, hey, you know, we think we're in a position now for the, or we think the community might be in a position now to really think seriously about some of these other options. And that would be my recommendation, only because if we build it into this initial lease purchase, we're essentially, and running what we heard, which was, hey, let's take some time and decide as a community if it's really important to us that we have more efficient lighting or that we have, uh, heat pumps producing air conditioning for the rest of the building. I, I just think we're going to run into the same, same kind of opposition that we just hit, but that's for you to decide.
I, my hesitance is I feel like, um, what I heard the need was for communication was about specific line items more than about general need, but I, I might be wrong about that. But I guess what I would say is I don't want to end up in the same boat where we don't have real numbers until late spring, early summer, and we have to make moves quickly, too quickly for people. So I would say like, it, can we figure out what, what that timeline is, what the select board, the facilities committee would be comfortable with in terms of like committing to numbers at a certain point?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I happen to feel that, or feel optimistic that we will come to the conclusion that we need more efficient lighting and air conditioning.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hopeful that we will get there, but I, yeah, it would be helpful to know what the timeline is from getting a bid to like, how long can we hold on to that bid before we have to say yes to it?
And I think, you know, I think there is a expiration date on bids, right? Because of the, the rising costs all the time. I, my gut says that we would, if we were going to move forward with other parts of this project, we're two years out, that we need to spend this year talking about it, get some pricing in the summer, early fall, come back to the community and, and make a decision on another phase in that following year. I think it would be really quick to, um, to move forward right now with, I mean, it's still 1.2 million dollars, right? It's twice what we're, we're talking about here just to deal with the boiler plant issue. And although there are tremendous benefits in terms of the environment and the physical environment for kids and teachers to move forward with some of those, they're not mission critical in the sense that a boiler failing at this point would be.
I think that's true. I guess my other question is, are there alternatives that we could explore, like better fans or like trees on the playground for shade?
Hmm.
That might help with heat, with cooling?
Mm-hmm.
Since we're not exploring cooling now, because I really do think, like I went to, um, the kids' wazazium thing in third grade and they had to cut it short. And there was just going around with like ice packs and water bottles and it was, it was like oppressively hot. And it's really close to passing out. So I do think that there's, and I know that sometimes I've been told we have to keep the doors closed because of, you know, safety issues. But I feel like, are there some alternative facilities things that we can explore that would help mitigate some of the heat that happens in September and?
And I'm not saying we couldn't continue to move forward even in this coming year. Um, I'm just imagining the, I mean, it's possible, it's certainly possible. I think what we need to do though is build some consensus in this community. Listen, anybody who came to these meetings this summer knows what this building feels like when it's hot, right? I mean, half the reason you couldn't hear the other night was we were trying to run this fan over here to cool things off. Finally had to turn it off because we couldn't hear each other literally right, you know, right next to each other. So it's real. Um, and, um, so if that were the, the, the will of the board, I think we just need to sit down and start planning that out. Like, okay, how do we, how do we communicate this to the community that these are some important next steps? We took care of the immediate emergent need and now we need to start talking about some longer-term solutions.
What I think might be helpful for me in terms of my processing is also looking at, because obviously if you do things in bulk, you end up paying less money in the long run.
Mm-hmm.
Because of all those little tiny nickel and diming things that do add up. And sometimes the interest rate also changes based on how much you're, gonna be taking out for a lease to own kind of deal. And so for me, seeing some of these interest rates, has been kind of helpful to see like, right now it's four point nine percent. Who knows what the interest rates will do. I think for me, I'm trying to still figure out what is the pros and cons of just going all in? Or what we need right now, knowing, that will then be something that you guys will have to be looking at in the budget every year of an automatic, one percent, two percent, that will always be there every year to pay for this. But knowing it's done because it's all encompassing from the beginning. Or is it gonna be like working on my old farmhouse and I nickel and dime things as they come up, as they break? And then in the long run, had I just invested the twenty thousand to do whatever, thing at the time, I thought, oh, I'll just put that off for tomorrow. And then I, like, is there an actual way for us to look at the tangible dollars? That potentially would be saved by doing it all in one? To be able for me to kind of know, well, if it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the life of it, well, that's like a three percent difference that probably will be fine to piecemeal it throughout the years because, that would be an easier thing for the town to absorb. Is nickel and diming that amount? But if it was like, three hundred thousand extra that it's gonna add by nickel and diming because of all the volatility of market or unsure about, like cost of living for everything is going up. And so whatever this project is right now, I am sure next year, those same laborers are gonna be getting paid more money to do the same work. And so it's kind of like, you do have to bet against the market in some ways.
I think you're also betting against the political capital that we expend. And I don't think we know exactly how the.
But that's what I'm saying, if we get back to data, instead of, well, it'd be nice to have. Well, sure, it'd be nice.
Well, I think we, I think we have the data. We know what it's gonna cost to include these items if we went forward with the full project. And it's about one, two point two million dollars more than these two proposals. So I think the, the most expensive option included everything soups and nuts was one point seven million dollars. So, you know, this isn't good math, but if our principal and interest payment, on the cheapest option, which is just to cover the property is forty seven thousand dollars, we can anticipate that to be about three times bigger. That somewhere in the range of a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, every year would have to come, be put aside in the budget. So the question really then becomes, is that palatable both to this committee? Right? Um, because a hundred and fifty thousand on a, is it four point seven million dollar budget? Is that what we were?
I feel like it's gonna be a very hard sell to continue to add interest rates on top of interest rates on top of interest rates on top of interest rate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to go to that meeting, but it does sound like we don't have the political capital now.
No, there isn't. But the problem also is, if we move forward and the sentiment from those who were there was, we just rammed this through. They have an audience who then comes out in the spring.
Oh, I agree, but I'm more thinking if we piecemeal this, it's, I don't know. I don't wanna limp through another season with the boiler the way it is either. But it's also one of those situations where it's like, having multiple four point nine percent loans or whatever it will be in the future, also does not make sense to me. And I, I get where, like even if you wait two years, that's still a separate, contract that would not, unless they're gonna roll in whatever we owe here into the new one. You're gonna have multiple interest rates that you're gonna be paying for each of these projects.
Yes, you're gonna have multiple. You're gonna have multiple payments. And if the interest rate goes up substantially, the payment for that second phase would certainly be more than it would be now. But if the interest rate.
Paying this interest rate.
Right, but if the interest rate doesn't change, the amount that we're paying every year isn't gonna change substantially. In other words, if we put it all in right now at four point nine, we're gonna pay, what did I say? About a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year instead of forty six.
And this was a locked rate?
That's the best rate that's going, going out right now. There's nothing locked until we engage our lawyers.
No, no, I mean, it's not a fixed rate. It doesn't change over time.
It doesn't change over time.
So people have to do what.
I think this is a good conversation for you guys to have because, ideally, I think we, you wanna be in a position, in our meeting after the facilities committee to say, no, we wanna continue to explore all the options. In which case, as long as we're clear, we're rolling the dice on this boiler. And, you know, that's made it twenty one years or whatever it is now, it might make it twenty two. But, you know, I, I, I think we're at the point where either we move forward with a piece of this, or we slow down and look at the whole project again from soup to nuts. In which case, that four point nine may not be the rate we get in the spring, right? You know, the rate you're worried about going up for the second phase could be applied to the entire thing too. I mean, these are all unknowns that we can't really control here. So.
Do we have forum? I'm not here on Thursday.
We do, I think.
I think the three of us were all able to be here at least.
Right.
No, no, it's okay.
It's all right.
Maybe let you all know that I'm stepping down. Uh, I want this to be my.
Let's talk afterwards because we do have to have the official designation today. Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Yeah, we just get the letter to Dave. Do you have Dave's email?
Yeah.
That way that he has to have it officially.
Kirsten, it might be valuable for the rest of the committee to have a sense of what you think is the right next step, just so that they can evaluate that, because it is putting a lot on three people's plate.
My opinion is that we should move forward with a boiler plan now. And very soon after that, have the facilities committee pay attention to the cooling options. In addition to EMC looking at fans and trees. That's my opinion.
Excellent. And we can talk about the rest of it on Thursday too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and Tom will be there or his second in charge will be there to answer specifics. Including like, okay, what do you expect the financing to do in a year? You know, I mean, he's not gonna give us a definitive answer, but he can say last year we were getting rates at five point two. It's gone down or last year it was. So.
Yeah, thank you for all the work. Learning and, and learning. Learning along the way.
Yeah, me too. And it's, it's been good. Between the three committees, I'm learning a lot of things about a lot of different things.
Personalities of three different towns. All right, so discussion next steps for EMC. I feel like we kind of argued that one. Bus route.
That looks good. Did the bus drivers put that together?
No, that comes from Ben Luce. So, yeah, he takes the number of buses that you've engaged and works out what he thinks is the best timing. So.
I had a question about Youngtown Road. I don't know when that's.
Mid-September.
In September.
Yeah. They'll have to figure out a way to get, half of Youngtown Road. I mean, it's not gonna be in this thing because they'll have to do a workaround, but, Luce should probably know that Youngtown Road is closed till mid-September. Literally, the whole road is, gone for a coward.
So that's bus route.
It could become multiple buses, right?
Yeah, they could break it up. Yeah, they could break it up over.
Okay, I will let Ben know.
I mean, it's nice to see that really there's nobody that's on the bus first. More than ours, which was our prior issue that we had before, so.
These routes are the same and not similar.
They're similar. And Beatrice will become so much easier. I don't know that there's anybody on the little spur. It's all up higher now. I don't think there's anybody down at the beach itself either. We were the cause of many people being a little bit longer around. All right. You, I think we need to vote on it.
Um, I, I think you can approve it. Yeah, so.
We'll make a motion to approve the bus routes.
All in favor? And then, so in the years past, they've kind of like done a breakdown of like each road name, number, and then when they can expect to be stopped. Can that be published on our website?
I will ask Ben for that or ask Justin how that works in the, in the past.
It didn't say like the family names, but it'd say like two seventeen Beach Road at eight fifteen or, like it gave the street number so that parents knew about what time their street number.
Yeah.
And then I would, like throughout the year, it would eventually get much shorter as people figured out who was actually gonna, get picked up or dropped off or not, but.
Right.
I think that helped parents to have at least an idea for first day of school. Because like Moody Mountain Road is pretty long, so by the time someone at the beginning of the road versus the end of the road wouldn't necessarily know whether they're at.
Yep.
You know, what times. All right, so that passed.
Okay.
Student parent handbook review.
So I wish Justin was here to hear any comments, but I'll do my best to coffee down.
My comment, which I related to Dustin, was about page seventeen. The consequences page. If I understood his response correctly, this part that's blacked out is being deleted. Is that right? I guess that's what I wanted to clarify. He was here.
Not sure.
Is that is about detention. So assuming that's deleted, I have no edits.
Okay.
Handbook.
My only reminder edit, I think, was just to update the staffing on page two.
There must be something with the black highlights because.
It would have been red.
As they add something like, starting at seven forty-five or whatever the actual time is.
Oh, right.
So it's like an editorial more than.
We, um, we don't have a color copier, so.
No, no, that's fine.
That's totally fair.
But I more was just saying like,
tonight, presumably.
Yeah, I.
Say approved with taking a look at page seventeen, page twenty and updating staffing on page two.
Yeah.
The only thing I didn't find, but it was long and I will admit, I did not get through at all. When he added the homework club piece of it, is that gonna be added?
That was my question relating to detention. Cause detention and the homework club are the same sort of thing, but have completely different intent and language. So either take them both out or put them both in or put one in, like be clear about what we're doing and what it means and that it's.
And why, yeah.
Meant to be helpful and not punishment or, or maybe it is meant to be consequence. I don't know, but be clear about what that is.
So what I'll do tonight is send all of these questions off to Justin. I'll CC all of you and say, please respond all, with what your intent is for updating these. So at least you know.
Oh, can we add in our, or is the shared folder something we should add in for the LCS school committee?
I gave him that note, which I think he did change. Like he was gonna add the shared folder and then there was like, there were a couple like typo things that he was gonna fix.
Love it. All right.
So a motion to approve.
To through the student parent handbook on conditions of those page edits.
All in favor? All five? And I'm assuming the health and safety protocol has to stay in there while we're finishing up the rest of our COVID loans. Think that why we?
I don't.
I think for a while we had to leave them in there because we were still technically paying on or using, there were some terms to, how long we had to leave that.
Yeah, my guess is, I think my guess is that's done. I think our ability to bill against those.
There's towards the end on page forty.
Yeah, our ability to bill against those, is expired, so.
Oh, right, because we did have, we have them all expensed at this point.
Right. On the other hand.
I mean, there's.
There's nothing on there that I would say, boy, we shouldn't have that, yeah. If you, you get a cold, wear a mask. I think we've learned something from COVID regardless of your politics, right? That.
Kyle and the special ed director is still on here, seven six three number. On page forty. Under use of school facilities. Oh, all of those will have to be changed on page forty-one.
Yeah, yeah.
I just now noticed, I was like, wait, they all say seven six three numbers on page forty-one. Now that nobody has a seven three number.
To search and find.
Yeah.
Should be up to you. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Facilities update on summer work.
So that's in Justin's principal's report, so we can either go to that now or we can, look at it when we get to his report.
I think to do it now since it's on separate items and that way then it doesn't kind of complete two different things into one.
So we are, I don't know, three full pages back.
Like having them as separate documents so that it doesn't.
Well, I asked, I asked for it, but.
No, no, I get it.
I'm gonna have to live with some snafus.
It'll be all right. They replaced the old phone, old system failed after power outage. Oh, look at that. Classrooms have been thoroughly cleaned. Carpets in every classroom, shampoo, hard floor surfaces stripped and finished. Lighting for classroom and hallways, pickbubs replaced. Gym floors is redone. All the outdoor property mowed and properly maintained from summer. That was one of the prior, issues that we had before that, um, people in town weren't happy that we were able to kind of keep up with the, lawn maintenance. So that's really nice. A good, win story of being able to keep up with that. All right. Oh, and then the, generator, what was happening with generators? Required another repair after it failed to start following a standard shutdown cycle.
There's a, oh, I see.
Do we need to include the generator in our issues with our boiler?
Is that one new?
I don't know. I don't think so. I think the generator is actually one that they said is big enough that it probably could power the whole school, but we only have like, a small little part of the school that's attached to the generator. a small little part of the school that's attached to the generator. But last year when we did have the power outage, the generator failed.
Yeah.
And it did not work as expected. And just seeing here that it failed to start following a shutdown cycle, I didn't know where, are we actually having issues with the generator?
I, I wasn't aware until we missed.
That that happened, yeah.
But I, what I remember about the generator and facilities meetings at least was what we already said about this, the capacity that it actually had versus um, the percentage of the school that it was connected to.
It's like nothing.
And then there was also a discussion about that with regard to this being a, meaning the emergency space and um, potentially needing it to be more and then it's currently in progress too. So sounds like we need to talk about generators and that.
Go facilities committee.
Facilities is in the.
I hope he's okay. Is Justin okay?
I don't know. I'm surprised he's not here. I haven't heard from him.
Side note. Um. Alright, anything else that you were for? Facilities updates outside of, I mean, I know it's on the board, but.
Uh, no, nothing else that I'm, that's on my radar.
The garden club thing here is a lot of working garments.
Outside, that's the other. I love that the, the community, the free.
Give them a big table.
Is up here in the center, not just down at the beach. That's really nice, too.
Mm-hmm.
What more convenience?
Inland folk. Inland folk.
Inland folk, yeah.
That's us. The beach in the center. Divide.
It is.
Updates on.
So these are the updates as of last week. Uh, I do believe, uh, Justin has made an offer to a first grade teacher and one of the ed techs. Um, but I don't have the details yet, so we haven't. I haven't seen.
Very sad when I actually saw first grade teacher and then seeing when I saw them. It's because she just moved to a different role. I was like, ew.
Yeah.
She's great.
Yeah.
Would be great if that's just, just exciting.
Well, that's great. And so do we end up having for the social worker? Are they going on contracts with teachers? Like we have to vote for them?
Uh, well. There, you gave me permission to hire this summer, so they've been hired based on their whatever step they're.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can bring, I can bring those steps and amounts to you next if that's, uh, important. From your standpoint.
I, I just wanted to make sure we weren't in a situation that we've had before where someone got hired and then we never actually did the official approval process.
No, we did.
Until like months later, because we.
Everybody, everybody who's listed here has, has gone through the, the HR process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything we need to do as many open positions to help promote or?
Um, well, I mean, I, I I think it's, if you knew somebody who was interested in being an ed tech, um, I would certainly encourage them to, to reach out to us. Um, but, you know, it's hard to find those people. I don't know.
The food service in also.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, somebody, if you're aware of somebody who might be interested in it, I would have them reach out to the, to the office or to Justin.
Okay. Excellent. I think the last time you guys put it out, we got because we needed substitutes. And I think you had put it out and all of a sudden then there were, we had like a couple of more substitutes that raised their hand as a result, so you never know who.
Yeah, no, there's nothing, and you certainly can keep advertising in your social media for substitutes. I don't think we can have too many lined up. Hmm.
There's schedule at time three, um. Samantha, it says resigned in August, but was she also hired or is?
So I'm not sure what she resigned for. Yes, she, so we rehired her. So I think my under, my recollection and honestly, I can't remember is, uh, she uh, sought retirement. And then there has to be a sixty day lag between, um, when they can take a new position and, and still collect their main state retirement. So her start date might actually be a little later than, than September one. Yeah.
So we're still looking for two.
Red tech three.
I think there's one, uh, that Justin did, did interviews for that, uh, he's hoping will agree.
So one, what we're looking for.
One special ed tech three, yeah, and food service, yeah, and substitutes.
With this food service. Kind of like you, yeah, I found it.
It could be. Nothing's come across my desk.
Iron Cross is for a part firm, so it's important. I believe we will have someone in place very shortly.
So just want to make sense of what they're really put out there and would hold down at least a special.
Correct. And substitutes, substitutes.
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 I will say maybe he got confused on the day because he did put Tuesday, August eighteenth on his thing. Maybe he thinks I'm meeting tomorrow, since we seem to be meeting all random days of the week now.
Yeah. Well.
Alright, well, uh, well fabulous, that's exciting. I am super excited. We have a social worker. That is amazing, and I'm glad that we also have a first grade teacher filling in. That was like, I was like, oh, that's like a not that our ed techs, we need those as well, but we also really need like pre-K through eighth grade primary teachers. And payroll? You've got someone to payroll, yeah. That's exciting.
I'm very excited. She'll start for us mid to late September, so I had to negotiate with Maria about that transition. Um, so yes, I think it's gonna be a
That's really great.
A great addition. Yeah.
Well, that was. Alright, any other questions on staffing update?
I, I just had a question. What's the, um, social worker uh, role, job description?
I will send you a copy of the job description, um, if you'd love to read it. Um. Their role primarily is to provide support to students with um, challenges, most of them mental health challenges. Um, they are trained and certified to do more than say a guidance counselor can do. So, um, one way to think about a social worker is they're much more like a paid coun- counselor. You might hire outside of the building. Um, and so in, in some situations, they work with small groups. In some situations, they work individually with kids. Um, sometimes with kids and parents, um, but they're dealing sort of with the more severe uh, mental health challenges that some kids present with. Okay.
Superintendent's report.
So you have my report, uh, in the packet. Uh, in addition to the report, I shared a number of items that, uh, I thought you might want to see. I will only point out one. You may have heard from, um, uh, Wendy recently asking you to, to meet with me. My, my goal, and ideally if things hadn't gone south so quickly, it would have been to have some of this done in the summer. Uh, but my goal first is to meet individually with school board members. You can see the questions I'm gonna ask you. Um, I'm gonna meet individually with administrators, teachers in smaller groups. Um, and then some of our town committees. My goal is to just get a, a read on all, all of these committees and then I will report out what I heard to you guys probably in January is my goal. Um, in addition, I've been reviewing over and over past meeting minutes, policy, those kinds of documents. Um, but it's really, uh, uh, my it's my plan for trying to understand as much as I can, as quickly as I can, so. So I would encourage you to reach back out to Wendy if you haven't signed up for a date, and if there's a different date that works. Um, I'd like for you to come down to our central office. I think it's really important for you to see what it is you're paying for. You can take that for what it means. Um, and, uh, but if not, I can certainly meet with, with people by Zoom if that's too hard to pull off, so.
Yeah. I think it's great. I do, I will have to find a different time just because.
Yep, well.
I already have to go to campus twice.
Talk to Wendy, Wendy will help you.
And then I have to also find employment somewhere in the middle of there, like.
Right. I understand.
But I am.
Yeah.
Actually, can we, yeah, I'll figure out. Probably once school starts, then I don't have to do multiple trips.
Yep. Fair enough.
Yes. I love it though. I really appreciate you taking the time to get to know how each one of our towns individually work and kind of the mindset of each one of us as school committee members. So I really appreciate that you're doing all of this to really get to know us.
And also nice to see that they expected outcomes as being integrated into the report.
Yeah, that should show up, uh, in the first reporting cycle this year.
Yeah, I love all these letters and CISO workshops and systems. It's very nice.
Yeah.
Yay.
And this agenda packet is a change that I just, I think we need to stick with in the sense that it's very hard with the, the materials that have been left behind. When they get passed out in these meetings, they don't necessarily get attached to the agenda and the meeting minutes. And so going back and going, what, what was that bid? You know, where is that is, is really difficult, so. I will do my best. I mean, I missed three board meetings, but my goal is to make sure this packet has everything that we discuss that requires backup, so.
Fabulous. Justin did text me back because I was like, dude, I'm worried about you. He's like, no, I'm just, I'm in Canada. I'm bringing Colby to school. He's like robbing off his son at college right now. I was like, okay, that's seems fair enough, like solid reason why not just be at a school.
Yeah.
Son is going to college, so I was just worried. And that made him worry. He's like, is everything okay? I'm like, no. Everything's fine.
Oh, and the one thing you won't see in this packet right now is budget to actuals. Um, I haven't shared with you, but um, Steph's been out of the office for about two and a half weeks. Her son had very major surgery and has been in Boston Children's Hospital. They just got home this weekend and, um, hopefully she can get back up to speed soon, but it was a good time in terms of, you know, summer's a little quieter. It's a little easier to deal without the business manager, so.
I'll send her our best.
Yeah.
I will.
Alright, anything? Did we cover pretty much everything on the principals report already? Was there anything else?
I think we did.
I am very happy though that not every packet includes the student handbook.
Yes, they, they.
But I realize they're not always gonna be this.
No. And I don't have to provide you with a paper copy, um, but I think sometimes during the course of a meeting, it's easier than trying to read it on your phone or your.
No, I actually really appreciate this because this will help me keep it a little more organized. Um, actually, the only.
That piece is long no matter what, just scrolling through on the computer.
But where's the end of the handbook? Yeah, thankfully.
It is nice at it.
The only thing was on page two of his report, it did say for the opening in-service day schedule. Or he will share more opening in-service day schedule, but among the many items we will address will be selection of a new leadership team, development of school-wide goals, review of the new gifted and talented selection process, professional relationship between support and professional staff in the classroom and development of multi-tiered systems of support. Right. Including, uh, is the multi-tiered systems of support similar-ish or utilizing some of the ruler program?
It does. Um, I don't know, you may have heard it referred to in the past as RTI. It's, it's a response to student need. And so really MTSS, RTI are really designed to identify those kids that are struggling, either from emotional to academic, find interventions put in place and then track whether we're moving the dial for those.
So no.
No.
Nope, nope. I, my own. We, we pushed the ruler, it didn't have to be the ruler program, but we pushed a lot on doing social emotional learning and kind of understanding that kids don't necessarily have the capacity at age six to like check their baggage at the door as they're walking in the classroom kind of thing, um, or even in middle school for that matter. And so my own little nudge every once in a while is just to be like, we did invest in the ruler program and hopefully that it doesn't have to be the ruler program. That's just what was selected, but as we're looking at all of these outcomes of um, maybe that's more the social worker or whoever, but just something that keeps that spirit alive that is not always what's on the surface that kids can help support each other too and teachers, they already do a great job of kind of meeting kids' emotional needs, but it's like the social emotional pieces.
Yep.
Alright, uh, so that was principals report. Committee, subgroups, subcommittees.
Do we have a list of them someplace, Suzie?
Well, I know that we need somebody for policy. And honestly, I don't know if you've had a finance committee before. Um, one of the advantages of a finance committee would be it requires fuse or fewer signatures on warrants and so.
Yeah, which I'm happy to do again unless you're excited about budgets.
Okay.
I nominate Kirsten and actually, I don't even know if we needed to do a nomination.
This is all appointments, right? Yeah. How about policy?
So it's a joint committee, so it would be someone from our committee, someone from Hope, and then someone from Appleton, and they usually meet those three together and then any proposed policies that either the state says here's a new policy that y'all gotta follow, or just revision of current existing policies goes through those three first with the superintendent to be able to say what do we think of this? Do we want to adopt it? Do we need to make changes? But it's kind of like the precursory look at what are all of our capital P policies, as Kate used to call them, like the official policies that we have in our policy handbook. And then if the policy committee likes it or is of agreement with it, then it comes back to each town's committee to then actually adopt it. But they kind of do the initial review of the policies to say, does this make sense?
And this is, comes from state, from superintendent.
Yeah, so it could be, uh, the state or our lawyers. So some policies are not new, but there are revisions based on statute changes or law changes, uh, adjudications, change policy. Um, and then there are a number of policies that in a, in a decent policy cycle, you, you revisit just because it's been ten years or fifteen years and they may be out of date, they may not be applicable anymore. And so it's my job to bring to the policy committee recommendations for a schedule of, of looking at these.
Name it, once a month.
Once a month unless it's really busy, right? Um, you know, I don't my experience has been once a month, I don't know what it's gonna look like, the fact that we have to meet. You know, I don't, my experience has been once a month, I don't know what it's gonna look like, the fact that we have to meet as three towns, and then we have to come back to the individual boards, but I would imagine once a month. Yeah, yeah.
Unless there was something they were trying to like, like if each of the towns had feedback on a policy and they wanted to make sure they got it back to the towns before the next cycle of monthly meetings, and sometimes.
So, and I think also it, it's my understanding that most of those initial meetings happen via Zoom, so they didn't require us to get together in one place, so it's less onerous perhaps than it might sound, um, so.
Certainly, if you want to get together with people, you can. There's nothing that says. Are you willing?
Yeah.
All right, I'm cool with Ann, thanks, and that's awesome.
And then it's my understanding that you have a com- uh, a committee that oversees a pool of money, and I forget the name of the Coombs Trust, thank you. And, um, as I looked at the charter, there is uh, an expectation the school committee is, uh, picks at least one member to, to sit on that committee.
Actually, I don't mind, yes. It's not very labor-intensive.
Yeah.
Like one year there literally was nothing, so. It's actually kind of fun because at the very end of the year is more when it comes in, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's like when there's scholarships for like middle students and.
We just, and say, here's how much money we have here, how much money we have, and the teachers will have, um, submitted for certain hopes and dreams, and you approve those based on the funding and, um, also grant a number of, you know, either in the past we've done five hundred or a thousand dollars, uh, for a number of graduating seniors. So it's fun.
Yeah.
After I was like, you know what, maybe that's a fun way to go out.
All out some money.
Although, wait, would that be a conflict? My daughter, yes. Because my daughter will be a graduating senior. If that happens, I'll.
Well, you can come to the meeting.
We'll figure out later. But that actually is kind of fun because this is a great, this is a great group from Lincolnville. All very deserving. Or, and then facilities.
Facilities and student learning committee, which I would like to do. Amy, are you okay keeping up with facilities?
I can keep facilities.
Thank you. Nope.
I feel like you're already in the trenches with it and.
Yeah, that one's small so far.
I will say for student learning, it might make sense to still have multiple.
Yeah, I love Amy to do it.
I, unless they actually want to, because I will say Ann has a lot of.
Many of us as can be involved in that, I think would be great.
What is it?
Student learning, so like helping look at, um, curriculum continuity and things like that. And assessment, making sure assessment's happening. That's the, and we just started this. So there isn't like structure to it, and it's very reliant on what information we get from Sean and Justin. But we're meant to be like supports for that, but I'd love your help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will, I think the root of it was, as a school committee, we've, or at least inside of an audit, there hasn't really been a full understanding of like, well, how do we choose the curriculums that are selected? Why are we doing those curriculums? So it was more around kind of exploring the, the like what and how of what's currently happening to not necessarily like tell the teachers, you need to go do this curriculum, but more around like, well, what are we doing to make sure that it kind of fits with our guiding.
Into fifth grade and fifth graders are prepared for ninth grade.
Yeah, because we don't necessarily choose the curriculum, but we should at least be aware of it to know what we're doing and why.
How do you can support through?
If they needed, yeah.
They, if they have, um, they express that they may help, uh, or have asked, um, that we're not sharing that through Justin or Sean.
It is the new thing. I just want to make sure we're not replacing Justin and Sean, like we have a different role.
You have a very different role.
Just was clarifying, I didn't want to seem like we're trying to be in the middle of it, it, but there is a fine line, because you do want to be able to like get the information, but I also don't want it to seem like we're trying to circumvent anything that.
I won't let you.
Okay. I know.
There are, there are clear, clear boundaries between your role and administrators.
Is not to micromanage, but keep us informed because we haven't traditionally felt informed.
Make sure it's happening, that's important.
Yeah, I love it. We got facilities, we got. I think health and safety has been kind of rolled up in facilities now.
Yeah.
That's, we are, we're done with that. So everybody that's on facilities is also.
Health and safety, I mean, usually one impacts the other anyway, so.
So this, so at least many, just a year old, is that right?
Yes. No, it has been here the whole time. It's just during COVID times, it primarily met around what are our COVID safety measures? It was less about the physical plant of it, and now that COVID is thankfully, you don't have to worry about red days, green days, yellow, whatever color day it is. And things have started to break down, so now it's kind of changed to what is our five-year plan for this physical plant? Because we haven't traditionally had that, so it's always been there. It, I just feel like its task has morphed depending on the needs of the school. Because Beth was on it for a while, and then Mike Johnson had been on it for a while. There have, it, it has been in existence.
So these, from the sounds of it, are all standing committees and, um, the Coombs Trust I know has one, um, but I do think it's important, and it doesn't have to rise to the level of policy, but I do think it's important to write out sort of the charter for each of these committees. So where I can find them, that's where I'll start. But one of the tasks that I'll probably be bringing back to this board is, this is what the finance committee does. This is how we pick members for it, um, same with something like facilities, this is the term, um, and so that it's clear to everybody who's on it, you know, what their real role and charge is, and who, who makes decisions where, so. Everything that's done at that subcommittee level has to be approved eventually by this board, so.
That might be your first task on the student learning subcommittee is to define.
Right, what that charter is, right?
I think all the rest of these.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Awesome, all right. And then if we forgot any, we can always. Oh, when meeting dates, so approval of twenty-five, twenty-six regular school board meeting dates.
On the second to last page.
Does, does that Mondays, the first Mondays still work for you? Did you want to try to break up the meeting?
I, I may, I may come to you, um, I need to sit with Steph, and I also need to sit with the town administrators and say, okay, what's this budget process been in the past and where can we shift? Um, so I'm not sure it'll require much change at this level. Where I think it's going to require changes is at the budget committee level, at, you know, you know, when we're gonna, I'm gonna ask principals to have their budgets to me, that's what I want to try to build some space for.
That was, I like Mondays.
So we probably need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the first Monday of the month at six o'clock dates.
Mine is September, which will be on September eighth. And seconds, all in favor? No problem. And the items for next agenda.
So I shared the same calendar that I gave you earlier, um, with some of the additions we made at the workshop, but um, if there are other items that you would like to see in September, um, I'm happy to, to make note of that here.
I don't know if it's still possible. I know this summer has been a little bit hectic with other things, but we had at one point towards the end of last year, school year, rather, thought maybe having some of the now ninth graders come back to talk about their Quebec trip. I don't know if any of them, I mean, they'll be back in school at that point, so they may not have a lot of desire to, but it might be neat for them to give a retrospective.
I mean, I, I'd love for them to come do that, but could they give a presentation to like the new, the rising eighth graders? Wouldn't that be more beneficial for them to like motivate them to fundraise and do their own trip?
I think they serve two different purposes. I think there was some level of like having the school committee know that that was a valuable experience for them and kind of be able to express appreciation for that opportunity to be able to do it, but I think it probably would be a motivator. Although, I don't know, I've heard that they may not be doing Quebec again, so that might not be a fun topic for them to come back and be fundraising for something that is not as nifty as the class before got to do, so I don't know. That might be a justing question as to whether it would make sense for them to come back and talk too.
Sure.
It was late enough in the year that they, yeah, that they didn't have presented anything to younger praise. Right, it was like the right end school.
Right, right, yeah. That's like their last thing they do, and then they don't come back again except for graduation. But it's just an idea for a student staff presentation, if there is any desire for them to come back, because I, I think that there had been some kids that did want to do that. It's just this summer has been, it would have been nice for tonight, but it's just been an insane summer with every, all the budget stuff and trying to coordinate our own meeting, let alone a student staff presentation as well, so I.
I think it would be hard for Justin to get a hold of everybody and pull that together in the summertime. I mean, I think if you're gonna get a report, it's gonna be sometime this fall.
Anyway, okay.
It would be worth, um, asking just about the, the climate of, you know, what, what the teachers and, um, chaperones thought, as well as the students and, um, what they find is for this year's class that have, you know, and maybe this isn't something for us to be involved with, but, um, at least in my experience, it is so helpful for younger students to hear about these experiences. Um, and all, I mean, we all saw all the fundraising that they did last year and participated in that and supported them, the whole school was involved with all these wonderful fundraising things that they were doing, and so to hear a little bit as a younger student, um, about what that went, went towards and, and the adventure that they had and what they learned would, I think personally, be very valuable. Um, it's just the issue of, uh, that they're not in this school anymore.
And we'll be doing some, well, not all, some will be yours. Should have asked Kyle when he was walking through. Hey, you can tell.
But if there is an opportunity for that and, and, you know, but.
Even if they want to give us a recording, like we could play a recording of like whatever.
Or I know some of the teachers were doing a podcast or newspaper, I don't know, they get some clippings.
Some, yeah, little nuggets, right, and the trip would be.
Be nice.
If it's, I also understand that it adds some extra work.
First day of school.
No, but the sixth graders can interview them.
Yeah.
Or something, yeah.
So many ideas being tossed out, and I am sorry.
Yeah.
I more wish a thing, that was a kind of dangling thing from the end of last year that we didn't do yet, so, but I also don't want the kids to feel like if they're not wanting to or don't have the time to do it, I get that as well, so it's.
We don't, I don't think.
Feel too stressful for it, but maybe it was something that we could talk about is, uh, a way to approach that with a, um, if there's any way to have a better timeline for capturing something from the trip to share.
Yeah.
With subsequent years.
All right. Love it. So students, they have, or unless they've got some other student staff, and then I don't think there was any other, anything else for September, other than our normal.
Is, um, Venus resignation a topic that we need to discuss, or is that something that?
I looked into, I looked into both the law and your policy. Your policy says that uh, any opening is filled until the next election, but the select board makes that decision. Now legally, you could have a policy that leaves that with you, and that may be a policy that we want to revisit because, um, it doesn't have to rest with the select board.
See the look at.
But, uh, that's what policy says, so policy overrides in this case. Well, my hope is that you are gonna share some possibilities. The one that we talked about is not a possibility.
Because they would serve on the joint committee.
Right, and so a sense she would be my employee and my boss, which is not allowed by law, so. So we do need to find somebody, and I think it would be in our best interest to make a recommendation to the support. As opposed to letting.
It's just an employee of one of the schools.
It was somebody who ran this spring and didn't win, um, but had expressed some interest. But you can't.
So we should think correctly.
They have to top my head, but for sure.
I think that would be wisest, um, and then Vina will need something official in writing, can even be an email, but stating what your, the date that you've told us, but we needed it in writing, so. And then, you know, we'll operate with four until, until we find a replacement.
And then at the next election, is that when people can put in papers to actually run them and be.
Right. Go through the normal process.
Really, we'd be looking at until November.
Yeah, so maybe three meetings.
At the rate we're going, that might be eighteen.
Well, it, yes, at the rate you guys are going, it might be eighteen.
In terms of items for the next agenda, are all these September things.
Those should be on there.
Likely on there, right?
Yep. And then, uh, you may or may not recall, but I've spent some time with the administrators at our retreat this summer, and we are working on a sort of an assessment, both an assessment calendar that really is teacher-facing, like these are the assessments that need to happen and when. Um, most of that's known, but I think it's important to have it written down. Um, but in a, a reporting on assessment results for the board, so we'll start to have a regular cycle of, we're gonna report out on attendance from last year in November, and we're gonna give you an update on the main through year in October. I'm not sure when it's gonna be yet. But as soon as those dates are fixed, I will add them to, so that document at the end is kind of a living document.
That's great. I'm excited about that. I don't have anything else. I mean, do we have, will you have a facilities committee meeting by then? Will we have like some committee reports, or committee reports?
I have at least some type of.
I don't think we'll have policy by then. Um, I'm sure there'll be an update. I mean, one of the things that Justin suggested at the facilities committee, and I think it's an important one, would be if we go forward with any part of this project, um, we need a, a fairly regular update, both to the facilities committee and then from them to you about where we are in the process. But the other item that came up that, uh, I will put on this, the agenda next month is, um, there was some concern expressed from the facilities committee, a little bit from the select board, that the renewal plan, the maintenance plan that had been developed wasn't formally approved by the school board. It's not required, but I think, you know, from their standpoint, being able to say, yeah, on September eighth, the school board reviewed the facilities recommended maintenance plan and, uh, you know, adopted it as a, a working document.
So I remember renewing it, maybe we didn't vote on it, but we definitely.
Few, although I where we got the bucket was, I can't remember, but we formally adopted it. We did, uh, after we started meeting as a facilities committee last year, we were regularly. For, um, started meeting as a facilities committee last year, we were regularly recording out.
Yeah.
Every, pretty much every spoke thing.
So that would have been valuable, so I, Justin didn't share that and I didn't know, so. The impression that was shared at the meeting was that, you know, school committee has no idea what's in this document and that's too bad. Because it's clear that it's not true, right?
Right.
And that's, you know, that is.
The unfortunate timing of those meetings.
I know, well.
Wouldn't it be great to have our whole committee there?
Absolutely, I, I understand, and if we weren't sort of fighting this. Drop dead deadline to do something this winter, we could have stretched this out quite a bit.
Yeah, but we, yeah, that's, that is unfortunate. I can look back through though to find out when it was, because, um.
Because it might be valuable to come Thursday with that and just correct the record for the select board, because they're very process-oriented. I have emails on them.
Then obviously give me after that, if you look and see if we.
I'm sure I can find it, Ames. I'll, I'll help prep you, I can't be at the meeting, but I'll write down what we did.
Okay, that'll be good.
Yeah, no, that is too bad, that it didn't get expressed, because we did, we have spent so much time.
Yeah.
Trying to review that, I think that's why I feel kind of bad that once EMC came on board, suddenly the facilities committee. I don't think you guys were just able to all meet at the same time at the same place, like everybody was kind of unable to attend all these different meetings. And it kind of fizzled, so it came back to us as a committee that we started then kind of taking lead on it instead of facilities.
I think also unfortunately, maybe one happens, could have been partly my personal life, because I had a, a surgery, like. But there was a facilities meeting like a couple of days after that or something, as well as a school board meeting, and I missed both of those, and so I made a comment at that. Meeting, like I hadn't seen something.
But I, I don't think, there was no malice in it, I just think that it just, things snowballed and we're getting. Back to everybody being on the same page again, I, I think it'll turn out fine, but I. We definitely have spent a lot of time discussing the facilities of this building, so we are aware of all the barriers. Because that's when Justin locked the locks for the doors, which are now in, like you guys have actually made progress on.
Yeah, yeah.
The plan, yeah. Yeah, alright, well, let me know if you.
We got the fire department in to do the lock spot, we did a bunch of stuff.
Yes, we got our reduced rate on our insurance as a result.
Yeah. I think we can come up with like a report that shows that we've been paying attention.
Um. We have been, yeah, anything else? If not, we can adjourn.
I'll make the most of it, yeah.
And seconds, all in favor of joining, oh, bye, yay.
So you should leave your blue folder if you don't want the paper copy, yeah, so I put that, yeah, that's in there. Yeah, no, that, the intent will, that'll always be in there, um, so that if there is a question.
Oh, I was just gonna turn it off for you. Oh, that's alright.